I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the February 20th, 2020 Town of Riverhead Planning Board meeting. Today's first item on the agenda is a public soaping, scoping session for SEACRA for Breezy Hill Group located at 1792 Middle Road. As Jeff makes his way up to the podium to explain the project and the environmental review process, I just would like to state that the purpose of this hearing today is not for people to come up and say they're for or against the project. This is for environmental concerns or input for the board to consider to include in this, in this secret process. So I would ask that anyone who does want to come up and speak about it, just to keep that in mind, please. All right? Thank you. Jeff?
Good afternoon Chairman Carrion, members of the planning board. My name is Jeffrey Seaman, and I am the planning board's consulting environmental analyst to assist you in the administrative procedures and environmental review of a site plan application known as 1792 Middle Road, also Breezy Hill Group's application. Today is the February 20th, 2020 scoping session for the applicant's preparation of a draft environmental impact statement. The planning board acting as lead agency under SEACRA and pursuant to town code for environmental quality review is required to hold this public scoping session to identify what environmental issues may be added to the applicant's draft scope, what methods and what assessments are required to prepare the final scope for an adequate EIS. The application is classified as an unlisted action under SEACRA, meaning it did not meet the type two action requirements, which would offer no further environmental review, and it is not a type one action, which requires a coordinated review, and typically follows with an EIS. However, this unlisted action was found to hold potential for generating adverse environmental impacts on groundwater, air quality, noise levels, traffic in local roadway, infrastructure, land use, community character, and some other issues. Therefore, the applicant was required and did submit a draft scope, which is dated December 26, 2019, and that has been circulated to involved agencies and posted for public review. The project is located at the southwest intersection of Middle Road and Manor Road in Calverton, and is described as Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-100-2-4.2. It contains currently an existing one, two-story frame stucco residence, which will be converted to an office, and an existing one and a half story frame barn garage, which would be used as storage space for the facility operations. An existing in-ground swimming pool and other minor residential accessory structures will be removed. There is a small, approximately two 107 acre unmapped manmade pond, which will be filled. The site is on 6.68 acre parcel in the industrial A zoning use district, where the applicant has proposed to construct and operate a construction and demolition processing facility. The facility will import concrete and asphalt generated by roadway and general infrastructure demolition, and use two onsite processing machines to crush and screen the materials. Outdoor storage of unprocessed and processed materials will be placed in up to five stockpiles, which are depicted on the site plan. Commercial haul vehicles are proposed to enter and exit from Middle Road, and employees will use an ingress egress at Manor Road. The site has experienced clearing of its vegetation, summary grading, and these actions occurred prior to approval of site plan. The application does require a New York State DEC Part 360 and 361 permit. These permit requirements are for solid waste and material management facilities, and the requirements are specifically identified in the proposed final scope. I wish to allow the planning board to comment on the draft scope, and for the public also to offer its comments. But beforehand, I have a long list of at least general items in order to have the public aware of what's been proposed thus far. Potential impacts to groundwater and any local water resources, noise pollution, dust impacts, traffic impacts, roadway and infrastructure, the removal of agricultural soils, stormwater management and drainage, including an investigation into whether or not subsurface drainage might better serve the site than a proposed recharge basin, an identification of the vegetation that's been removed and its loss that had once offered screening and buffer opportunities to adjacent residential properties. It must show that it is compatible with the town's master plan, as well as the town's proposed and updated solid waste management plan, which is available at the town engineering department. A discussion on impacts to the manmade pond, and a need to investigate, based on sound studies, whether or not a sound wall along any residential properties to the east might be warranted. The applicant must identify the site's location with regard to environmental justice areas, and identify potential impacts on any identified population, impoverished persons, minorities, and/or any disproportionate adverse impacts on an environmental justice community. The applicant must also investigate groundwater quality and directional flow by the installation of groundwater monitoring wells. They must also provide soil and prior stockpile lab samples that were taken previously at the site, provide a full description and ability to meet and comply with all New York State DEC Part 360 and 361 regulations for a C and D processing facility, and provide full permitting applications as submitted to the DEC and the status of each application. They're asked to list all land use and/or DEC notice of violations, stopwaters, fines, corrective actions, settlements, and the status of each. And under the alternative sections, in addition to the no build, we have identified at least two alternatives uses, a warehouse, which might be equivalent to a self-storage type facility, and agricultural production, each are permitted in the industrial A zoning use district. So once a final scope is issued, the applicant will then prepare the EIS, and the planning board as lead agency will evaluate whether or not that EIS has met the final scope. If it has not, it would be rejected with comments as to where the deficiencies are. The applicant has an unlimited timeframe to address that, and then once the final EIS is accepted, it will go out for public review, and the public will have an opportunity to comment on the application. Lastly, to reinforce what the chairman had said, speakers are requested to limit their comments really to the scope, the methods, and the items that they would like to have addressed in the EIS. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'll be available after.
I'd like to ask you a question now, Jeff. The manmade pond, is there any signs of spartina grass or wetlands, wetlands life, like ducks and fish?
I looked at the pond during, you know, the winter this month, so it would be difficult unless I got in. I didn't go onto the site, I just sort of took a windshield tour, but we can ask the applicant verify the characteristics, absolutely.
Thank you. Jeff, before you, before you sit back down, you mentioned the monitoring wells. I know that was one of my comments to add. The purpose of the monitoring wells, is that only to determine the groundwater flow direction, or to actually take samples?
I've requested that in the, in the scope, for the applicant to take water samples, at least two rounds of water samples of up gradient and down gradient wells, and to run a, an equivalent parameter analyses of what we call Part 375, 6.8, that's a DEC regulation, typically used to identify soil characteristics of a contaminated site, but you can parallel that with groundwater quality as well. So we'll be looking for volatile organics, semi-volatile organics, a full list of metals, herbicides, pesticides, yeah, pretty much the full scope.
I would suggest, I doubt that code calls for the emerging contaminants that are a major concern, concern as of recently. I did do a little research myself, and I contacted Suffolk County Health Department, and unfortunately, I'm not happy to report today that they undertook a, a private well study back in June in that area, and unfortunately, many of the wells in that area have shown signs of contamination at above drinking water standards. So I think that we should really detail this part of the scope and work with other agencies, because I understand there will be a full investigation by the DEC. And as far as the, the monitoring wells, I would recommend that they get screened at different depths, so that we have a better chance of capturing anything that may or may not be coming from that site.
That's a, an interesting comment that, that does verify one of my observations from the field, when one of the neighboring properties had about 30 water, large water jugs scattered out in front of his house that he was bringing in for his own drinking water.
Anyone else from the board?
One thing I'd like to see added to there and out to the, yes, the scope, and to the EIS, is vibration. I'd like to see some parallel sites where there is concrete smashing, and see some data from those sites, so that we get an idea of what we can expect, in addition to the noise, I appreciate that. Also, I noticed in the, in the staff report that application was made to the zoning board, like two years ago, and has there been any movement since then, or any decisions?
There was a request for an interpretation on concrete crushing that was made to the zoning board of appeals. The, and I do not have the exact language before me, but I believe the zoning board of appeals interpretation was quite limited to crushing concrete. After at least some informal discussions, to clarify that for myself, it was my understanding that if you take a sledgehammer and crush a concrete curb, that would be crushing concrete. I think my definition of the facility is best outlined by New York State DEC's permit for a solid waste facility that is processing C and D. They, they do not specifically state in the regulation that it is only crushing concrete. If this is granted Part 360 and 361 permit, there are other materials that could be processed at the site, unadulterated wood, brick, fill. So I've asked in, in the, I gave a brief summary outline scope, in the detailed scope, I've asked the applicant in the EIS to elaborate on all of those conditions, whether they're part of this application or not. If granted that Part 360 permit, it could be expanded to include other materials.
So they have to get DEC 360 permit as part of this?
Which they could not proceed with until after the
Oh, yeah.
Environmental review process is over, and DEC is, has, has been advised that they are part of this coordinated review. And I've had several discussions with them to date.
Okay. Anyone else? Can anyone from the public want to share any concerns, or have anything added to the scope of this project? Please come up and just state your name for the record, and, and your concerns, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Foley. I'm in Reeves Park. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Sound Park Heights, which represents that community. I'm on the community awareness group, and certainly, I think people really need to be aware of what's being contemplated here. I want to thank Denise Civilletti for putting a very informative article together the last couple of days, which really got me to get rid of my schedule and come here today. In reading it, I know this is about scoping, and the integrity of the applicant, is that any consideration in the scoping hearing, or in the decision-making process of the planning board?
I would say not.
Okay, so no matter what their track record is, you could only limit your approval or disapproval on the feasibility of this one area?
I, I think that's the case, yes.
Okay. I, I see that the name of the LLC is Breezy Hill Group Six. Does that mean that there are five other similar projects that are already done, or are in production right now?
Do we, Jeff, where's Jeff's? There he is. Do we know the answer to that?
I do not, perhaps the applicant or the applicant's representatives, none of that were, that have been submitted here in Riverhead.
Okay, thank you. So we're back to the, the applicants themselves. So we know from an article, and also to quote the planning board, who clearly has their concerns about this. I mean, they were quoted in May about the reason why you guys insisted on a POSDEC, that it's supposed to operate two crushing screening equipment stations, maintain a total of five asphalt concrete stockpiles, according to the application. And the planning board, really, I think nailed it by saying, "In making its determination of significance and finding that the proposed action may have a significant potential adverse impact on the health, welfare, and the environment," the planning board last May cited the following reasons, quote, your quote. "The use poses potential threats to the groundwater supply in an area where public water infrastructure is not currently available, and whose water usage for uses in the surrounding is providing via wells fed directly from groundwater." Stan, I don't, I don't know what made you do your own investigation, but I want to thank you for that. You've already seen things that are happening in this neighborhood before we put this potential toxic site in our midst. And I don't want to sound like I'm hysterical about this, as you know, that perception is reality. And anybody that subscribes to Newsday sees what this headline is in Newsday from two days ago. The Grumman Plume: Decades of Deceit. This plume started about 55 miles west of us, and now is about 40 miles west of us, and continuing its eastward traveling. So it was great that you were talking about the, which way the water levels go. I think all that's very important. But I mentioned the integrity of this applicant, because as it was cited here, they just had blatant disregard for the permitting and for the application to clear cut part of their land. And if they're going to blatantly disregard something that is visible for anybody to see, what are they going to do in the dark of night when they're dumping stuff into that ground? How deep is this manmade pool? Sir? How deep is the manmade pool that's being contemplated right now?
I don't have a depth on the existing pool that's there.
Okay. From what I was told, and again, this is secondhand, and Denise did not include that in this article, it seemed to me that the pool was going to be lower than the area of the old Riverhead dump, where we have, we know we have toxic stuff there. It's one of the reasons why it was closed. We don't know how far, how deep it has descended, or how far east or west it's gone, to my knowledge. How close is the most contiguous point of this manmade pool to the most, the closest point of the dump?
So I think, Mr. Foley, some of your points that you're making are included in the scope of this process, and, you know, my comments and my research, I've asked to actually make sure they're expanded enough to provide us with, with some of the answers that, where I think you're leading to. So we appreciate your comments, but if, you know, if there's anything else that hasn't been covered, which I think some of the things you're saying have been, you feel free to share them with us.
Stan, I'm sure that a lot of the stuff that I'm probably mentioning are included in the materials that I'll take home and I'll read. Just finally, the samples that are being taken, are they supervised by any regulatory agencies?
When you, when you collect samples, whether they're soil samples or water samples, there is a specific process from the laboratory that you have to follow, which includes a chain of custody. So from the time they collected to the time they deliver it to the lab, there's a, a chain of custody that people sign off on, so that it's, it's fully certified.
I just want to thank you for everything that you've done here. I think you are ahead of the game, which is a wonderful change from some of the past that we've had in history. This town has been polluted in a couple of different areas that you're aware of, and the last thing we need now, in a residential neighborhood, from a company that came in four years ago, I don't know who these people are, but I do know what illegal dumping can entail. And I do know that what could be looked at perceptively does not match, match the reality of what actually happens after dark. We're talking mob family dumps, we're talking places that $1,000 a barrel gets dumped for $50 a barrel at somebody that doesn't have ethics to take a look at what they're looking at. And your first impression to me is you have no ethics whatsoever. This should be voted down, and I thank you very much for making this possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just, just for the record, before the next speaker, I just want to clarify my comments. I don't want to imply that I'm suggesting that the source of the private well contamination is coming from this site. I just merely wanted to point out that it requires more investigation to determine the source. So I just want to make that clear, that I'm not implying that it's coming from this property, but it does certainly raise a lot of questions that we will need answered.
Hi, Lynda Nemeth, Calverton, New York. I'm part of the RNPC, as well as the Calverton Civic, and I'm a resident a little further down Middle Road. I'm wondering what kind of consideration has been given to those five or seven homes? I don't know if one is on the market at all. I know one of the people was trying to sell last summer, and with this, I doubt that they'll be able to even give their house away. What considerations being given to those people? Noise, vibration, water, air quality, everything of that sort? Those people are going to be at a tremendous loss, health-wise and in every way, financially possibly. So I'm wondering what kind of consideration was even given with this kind of an operation? I understand that agricultural, as well as commercial use can, or industrial can be put in here, but what kind of industrial would make a tremendous difference to people who are landowners and homeowners in this area, and even the farmers? What kind of spread of air pollution can drop down onto those farm areas, and the things that we're going to be purchasing as vegetables, et cetera?
Jeff, is property values part of the scope, or should it be part of the scope for the people who live in the immediate area?
Typically, it's not included in a scope, other than its impacts on community characteristics and compliance with the master plan. A property value evaluation can sometimes be a very subjective analysis compared to other scientific factual-based studies that are, are part of SEACRA, which is why community characteristics is an important and valuable tool, even within the types of permitted uses within that zoning district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess it's my turn. Hello, my name is Talkie Church, and I'm a resident of the Beating Hollow, Calverton area. I'm also the president of the Calverton Civic. I'm here today to read a brief one-page letter from one of our members, if that's okay. Yeah, so I'll be brief. It reads, "Dear Town of Riverhead Planning Board, as a resident of Calverton, I'd like to weigh in on the Breezy Hill project on Mill Road and Calverton. I have some questions and concerns about the project. Concerns: Middle Road is a designated bike road, and is a very well-worn road with plenty of hot holes and rough pavement. What is the expected increase in traffic? Assuming large trucks, semis loaded with debris, how will this impact the quality of this road, and how can residents be assured this road will be maintained? This will impact Manor Road from 25 to Middle Road. Is it possible to restrict traffic to 25, to Manor, to Middle, and not have them traveling down to me or Middle Road from Mill? There is a history of contaminated debris being dumped in Suffolk County. How can Breezy Hill be a good steward of the property and not allow contaminated materials from being processed and stored at their facility? Is there a potential of groundwater, I'm sorry, there's a, is there a potential of ground and aquifer water contamination? How will this area be inspected, and by whom, and how often? What happens to the materials once they have been processed? I understand the owner of this property has not been in compliance with town ordinances, and has several violations pending in court. I hope it gives you great pause to consider permits with an owner who doesn't follow the law, in an industry where there is history of hazardous materials showing up. I would recommend that the residents on this stretch of Middle Road be notified by mail of this project. It's about 10 homes, and I would want to know, this is, this was occurring, if this were occurring in my neighborhood. They are all on well water. Thanks, Sharon Donegan." And those are my comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
We did receive, the planning board did receive her comments and writings.
Thank you for recognizing that we did send it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Deborah Goraleski, and my property is right next door. When we first moved out there, over 30 years ago, we had owls, fox, and a lot of wildlife. When they started clearing and cutting everything down illegally, the owls went away, the fox were gone. Every so often, you'd smell a skunk going by. But now, since it's been, some of the little bit of the stuff has grown back, we do have the owls coming back, and the fox, and hummingbirds. But I'm concerned with the noise, which is right next door to me, and every, having to call the police department because things were not done during the week. They were done on the weekends and at night. So I'm hoping that you take this into consideration, because you can go back and you can see with the planning board, that I have filed with the police department on how many times they've come out for different things, and how disrespectful they can be. And I am concerned with our water, and with our wildlife, and with our, you know, I, I don't want to have to move. I like where I am, but I don't want to be pushed out. I want it to be my choice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Byrne. I'm also a resident of Calverton, and reside over on Middle Road area. I just heard one concern, or a couple, three questions. With the permit, you mentioned that even though it's concrete recycling, they can at any time, according to the permit, then change to any other type of item? Is that correct, that you mentioned?
There was certainly
They can go to bricks, and any wood debris, and anything else after this?
The Part 360, 361 The Part 360, 361 covers all those materials. So if granted, it can be either included initially or expanded later, but it does not require any new permitting. It just, they would be permitted, sort of under that umbrella. What they are proposing is only, at this time, asphalt and concrete.
But at any other time, they can just go forward and have any other kind of debris, crushed, recycled, timber, red brick?
Within the limitations of the permit that the E.C. would issue, yes. So we have asked for a full explanation under the New York State D.E.C. permitting requirements as to what that would look like on this site, so that this board would know in advance that if that were to change, that will already be studied in the environmental impact statement. So it is, it is not only isolated to the asphalt and the concrete, it's all items under that umbrella.
Okay, thank you. So-
In terms of a permit, can it, can it exclude items that could not be disposed of?
That's also a question for this board under its site plan approval, I suspect.
I was thinking of the 360.
But it also always comes down to monitoring and enforcement.
Now, with the other point, I understand that there's been clearing already done, and that they cannot be expected to follow the permit then? In other words, if they switched over to red brick or other debris, where, how would the town or the council find out about that? You know, they're not gonna, if their permit is an umbrella permit, they can come at any time and change whatever they're going to recycle. Is that correct?
Well, it would be allowable under the permit if they got it when they applied.
Right.
So, but I think-
But it seems to me that they don't, they're not in compliance as it is already.
Well-
I just, this is the first I've heard of this, I'm just saying.
We really, we're not here to do enforcement, you know, we don't have any authority to enforce something that's being done illegally, but we are here to hear concerns for this secret process, and any other environmental concerns that the public wants to put forward for us to research during this process.
Right.
But it's, to me, everything that you've, you've mentioned so far would be covered under, under the scope of what is going to be researched.
Okay. Now, the other, the, the water samples, and, and ground soil samples and everything else like that, who would be retrieving them for testing?
A licensed company.
Oh, a licensed company, all right. Verified license.
Verified.
Okay. That would be my concern. And the fact that they're not in compliance as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, from what the gentleman said, enforcement, is enforcement of this a consideration for the planning board because you don't have it? Are you, are the concerns of enforcement on someone that has already shown a propensity? It breaks my heart to listen to that next-door neighbor. This is, this is an actor, a bad actor. They are on their best behavior at the application stage. If this is what they're doing on their best behavior, what are they gonna do when the lights go out? Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments?
Who is responsible?
Just your name for the record, please.
Kathy Lindstrom. Who is responsible for the enforcement? Is it the code enforcers, or?
Yes.
Oh. We're in trouble.
Okay, anyone else from the public? Okay, so we've heard all the concerns. We do have, have a resolution to act on today for this process, and based on some of the comments, it will be, as amended, to include everyone's concerns, and they will be added to the scope of this review. Okay? I do appreciate everyone coming out and speaking. It does mean a lot to us when we get, you know, this public input to, to move this forward, regardless of which direction it goes in. But this is a very important part of the process. So thank you to everyone who came. Do we, Jeff, do we need to officially close the scope, or session?
It is just a session, so you don't need to formally close it.
All right. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is a discussion item for Suffolk Foot and Ankle, 976 Roanoke Avenue. Just your names for the record, please.
Sure thing. Philip Butler of Farrell Fritz, representing the Atkins of Suffolk Foot and Ankle.
Jason Pontieri, J. Pontieri, P.E., D.P.C., the engineering consultant for the site plan.
Okay, so-
So the planning department has received and reviewed an administrative site plan application, which is proposing site improvements at the site of an existing professional office, including expanding an existing parking area, installing drainage systems, and performing lighting and landscaping improvements. The proposed action is a Type II action pursuant to SECLR, and is, as it involves construction or expansion of a primary or accessory non-residential structure with less than 4,000 square feet of gross floor area. Based on the Type II classification, no further environmental review is required. Subject parcel, particularly identified as Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-107-1-56, is an approximately quarter-acre parcel, which is located at 976 Roanoke Avenue in Riverhead, is located on the east side of Roanoke Avenue between Durie Street and Northern Parkway. Site is presently improved with a one-and-three-quarter story frame structure, driveway, and parking area. The site in its current state was permitted by a Town Board Resolution Number 32, which was dated January 4th of 2000. That site plan approval approved the conversion of the existing single-family residence to a commercial office space. Permits were subsequently issued, and the site received a certificate of compliance on November 17th of 2000. At the time, only the first floor of the structure was going to be occupied as office space. The second floor and the basement were not occupied, and were not included in any parking calculations at the time. The site plan now currently proposes to utilize both the first and second floor as professional office space, and as such, requires an expansion of the parking area. The total square footage of the proposed office space requires a total of nine parking spaces, which the site plan complies with, including one handicap parking space and accessible handicap aisle. Site plan currently proposes three parking stalls in front of the existing structure on Roanoke Avenue, as well as six parking stalls located to the rear of the building. A handicap accessible ramp is also proposed to serve as ADA access to the building through the rear entrance. As the parking area will be expanded, the site plan proposes new drainage structures, as well as the abandonment of existing structures in order to manage onsite stormwater. As far as landscaping, the site plan currently proposes to re-vegetate the site with 28 arborvitae, 37 Pennsylvania sedge, and 18 green velvet boxwoods. The landscaping is proposed in the front yard, along the southern, eastern, and northern property boundaries, as well as two landscaped beds in front of the structure. Staff generally recommends street trees to be planted along the frontage with Roanoke Avenue. However, due to the layout of the parking area and the 60-foot width along the frontage with Roanoke Avenue, the installation of street trees does not seem practical. However, if the board desires, they could put at one tree in the southwest corner of the parcel. Additionally, as per Town Code, the installation of the proposed Pennsylvania sedge along the eastern property boundary does not currently comply with the requirements of Town Code, as these landscaped buffers are required to be evergreen plantings, which will attain a minimum of six-foot height, whereas the Pennsylvania sedge is a low ground cover. The landscape buffer should be amended to show a row of arborvitae. The site plan currently proposes two LED lighting fixtures on the rear facade of the building. The lighting fixtures are identified as Scoop Six with Snoot, fixtures that will be tilted 35 degrees below horizontal. Fixtures are proposed at a height of nine feet, and they comply with the 3,000-degree Kelvin color temperature. Photometric data provided with the application does not demonstrate any light trespass onto neighboring residential properties. However, clarification is needed as to whether or not the fixtures are dark sky compliant, as dark sky compliance does not appear to be specifically pulled out under the backdoor cut sheets. During a site visit, it was noted that there was a non-compliant wall pack on the northern facade of the building. The applicant, application has since been amended, and this light fixture will be removed. It is noted that the site plan does not currently identify the location of any trash enclosure. Although the proposed use may not generate a tremendous amount of solid waste, a refuse area should be shown in the site plan with details of any proposed refuse containers, i.e. dumpster, trashcan, et cetera. The application does require several variances, identified as follows. The proposed two-way drive aisle on the northern side of the house is only 12 feet, where the required is 24 feet for two-way traffic. The proposed landscape buffer with the neighboring residential property to the south is six feet, required is 10 feet, and the proposed landscape residential buffer to the east is, it's actually been amended, I've spoken with the application, is now 6.2 feet, where required is 10 feet, and the proposed sign is 0.7 feet from the front property line.
Correct?
Yes.
Do they need relief for the parking in the front?
No.
No?
No, they're not, they, they will need relief just for the drive aisle, the landscape buffers, and the sign being less than a foot from the property line. A letter dated January 7th, 2020, from the town engineer had comments referring to the drainage thickness of the walls of the leaching pools, minimum of 10-foot distance is required between leaching pools, and the existing drainage structures must be cleaned prior to obtaining a CBL. The site plan does not currently propose any modifications to the side of the existing structure, and as such, the plan will, does not need referral to the Architectural Review Board. The plans were referred to the Suffolk County DPW. Suffolk County Department of Public Works came back with a letter requiring a 28-foot-wide commercial curb with reinforced concrete apron. As I understand, the applicant has spoken to the Suffolk County DPW, I believe they've gotten them to reduce that to 24 feet, so they will comply with the Suffolk County DPW requirements. And as the application falls under the scope of an administrative site plan review, the planning board has the discretion to require a public hearing on the application or not. Being that the site already is the site of an existing commercial office space, and they will need to have public hearings for the zoning board of appeals, the board does have discretion of whether or not they would like to hold a public hearing on this matter.
Okay. So when you first started out, you said that it's a one-and-three-quarter story structure. So how are we getting a second story out of that for use?
Well, the, this, we're not expanding the, the footprint up there. There's just, the prior owner actually converted at some point in the past to usable space, so we're just continuing that use. So whatever's there already is staying. We're not dormering it or expanding the footprint in any way. The square footage is remaining the same.
What kind of office is it proposed?
So just to put the application in context, the principal of our client is a pediatric, orthopedic surgeon. He's expanding his practice so that he can meet with clients farther east. He's associated with several hospitals out here, as well as having his own private practice. So he just needs somewhere where he and his staff can meet with patients. So it's going to be at a professional medical office, but it's not like they're going to be doing procedures there. Surgery would happen, I believe, off-site, so.
Well, what kind of traffic do you expect to be generated there on a daily basis?
Well, on average, they would have one medical professional doctor and two staff members, and I'm, how many, how many examination rooms are we going to have in the fourth floor?
There's three.
Three. So at most, you'd have three patients, or three additional cars.
Is the main, I'm sorry, Stan, is the main entrance in the front or the rear?
It's in the front, but there's going to be, and there was previously, an ADA access ramp in the rear.
Okay.
But that was constructed of wood, and it was in poor condition, so it was removed.
Your diagram here shows a, an orange sticker on the door. Is that a violation?
It was a stop work order. When my client took title to the property late, mid-last year, he started clearing the property.
Has it been vacant?
Oh, it was, it was vacant when he acquired it, yeah. So it was previously a wellness center. It was already a medical office use. That vacated, I think in 2018. My client acquired it in July of last year. It was already vacant. The property was, was somewhat overgrown and not in great shape, so he immediately went to work clearing it up. Didn't realize that in Town Riverhead, cutting down vegetation can trigger site plan approval, so he was served with a stop work order. I think they were also doing some interior work, but I can't speak for that.
So was there originally, was there a change in the zoning to, to allow this, to allow this to become office space?
Yeah, that-
Because if it was, it lost it.
Well, yeah, so it wasn't a change of zoning, but they did get site plan approval in January of 2000. That was done by the town board.
No, but it's vacant, was vacant in 18?
But just, if I may, the zoning there permits medical office, and it was approved, not by variance, it was approved by a CO for a medical office when it was converted in 2000 from a residence to, to an office building.
Both floors were CO'd?
That is the issue that we're now addressing. So when it was approved in 2000 for the medical office, it was only approved for the first floor. Again, my client acquired it, and the upstairs had already been converted into usable space, so now we've actually, we're asking for permission to use the second floor for offices, and in addition, we've already reached out to the Riverhead Sewer District and to the Health Department for the additional flow, which is something like 64 gallons per day. It's negligible, but for approval to, to address the additional design flow.
Is the upstairs going to be open to the public, or?
No, it's, it's going to be office space only. Examination rooms will be on the main floor. The basement is going to be dead storage only.
When you're hooked up to the sewer, and you're hooked up to the water?
Yes, it's already, it's already hooked up.
Yeah, okay. So I, my only concern would have been traffic in and out of the site, excessive traffic, but D.P.W. commented, and it doesn't seem to be a concern with them. So my feeling is, is given that you're going to have to have public hearings in front of the zoning board, I, I'm okay with doing administrative. It's gonna, you know, the landscaping plan's gonna make the site look that much nicer. I don't know that it's necessary that we, you know, have a full plan review.
I appreciate that.
I agree.
And if I can respond to some of the staff comments, just to let you know that we have addressed, I believe all of them at this point, the, the row of arborvitae in the back. We will revise on the landscaping plan that was provided. There are already evergreens proposed there, but we're going to fill in the space that would have been with the Pennsylvania sedge. The light pack that was on the side of the building, we've noted that on the plans is being removed. We had a discussion about the refuse enclosure, and I think we came to an agreement. It's been added to the plans. There's a notation that it will be addressed by commercial office.
Is it going to be the same size as it is just enclosed?
No, so what they'd like to do is, given that there's a small amount of people, they would just have a cleaning crew come in bi-weekly and take the trash out that way.
Is it going to be occupied every day?
Is this going to be like a part-time office?
Not part-time, but the, the medical professional who's there on a given day will rotate. So I, my understanding is that it will be open regularly.
Your resolution's going to contain a thing that all of the lighting has to be dark sky compliant.
And I think we have that proposed, right?
Do they need to have a dumpster?
It's not specifically required, but it would be recommended. I mean, again, based on the amount of refuse they generate, not saying they need a full dumpster, but just, you know, something to be able to-
Have that trash collected.
Correct.
All right, well, assuming you get the variances from the zoning board, after that, it will go through administrative approval?
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you. Very much, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, next item on the agenda is J. Rado, two lot minus subdivision. Okay, we're back again.
Third time.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make this a quick discussion, I know there were, we were still waiting on comments from some other agencies, and we didn't receive them.
Okay.
Suffolk County Planning Commission said that it's a matter of local coordination, so it had no issues, and I know we were still waiting on the Riverhead Highway Department as well. I got in touch with his deputy supervisor, superintendent, and he says, you know, the applicant will need to apply for a road opening permit to install the water service from Sound Avenue, and the applicant will need to apply for a highway permit to open access to the proposed second lot for a driveway. And the highway superintendent did say that they could apply for those two permits at the same time, so they don't have to come back and forth, as long as it's completed within one year, and those were just the main comments. And then it, it, there's a resolution on, per today, to approve subdivision.
Okay, no problem with the permits?
Nope.
Everything's fine, conditions are fine.
All right. Shouldn't be a problem today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item three, Donnelly Residence, chapter two nineteen. Okay. How are you? Vinny, why don't you come up for this one, please? Just your names for the record, please.
Richard Bosworth, builder.
Anthony Tarantino, structural engineer.
Engineer, okay. Okay, so we had some outstanding questions on this project, um, and it appears that most of them had been answered, but I think there may be one more specific question that we needed to ask the engineer?
Well, I, I, I think we asked for some information, just to kind of assess what they were doing out there. When I last was in front of the board, we last discussed this, I was of the understanding that the sanitary system that was shown on the site plan and survey, uh, was being proposed. I'm led to believe now that it's existing.
It always was, we-
Okay, so, so-
Quite a few, quite a few meetings ago, um-
Okay, so is it, so, so there's an existing sanitary system that's there? And as a result of that, we had asked for some information relating to a test hole, relating to what the soil types were there, and the excavation associated with the foundation and the potential impacts to the adjacent property because of the limited side yard. I, I think with respect to excavation, uh, for the foundation and what we have, um, that, um, though there is minimal room, or likely minimal room, between the proposed foundation and the property line, that they can excavate to get that foundation in the ground. They, you know, should be cautious in doing it, uh, they should be careful in doing it, uh, they don't have a ton of room, but based on what the, you know, the properties of the soils and the angle of proposed with the side slopes in the excavation, I believe it's a doable thing. At this time, I've identified four things, though, that, um, uh, I, I were not responded to, or I, I still think of some importance to this project. Uh, the first being that all proposed, uh, improvements on the site, driveway, walkways, constructed surfaces, be depicted on the, on the site plan, because as of right now, all we're seeing is a house. Uh, and, you know, I'm not trying to steer the applicant in a direction that he needs to generate a site plan or a detailed engineered site plan for a residence, but, uh, because of the concerns of stormwater runoff, the tightness of the site logistics, if you're gonna be building a driveway and a walkway and stuff like that, should be represented on the site plan.
Well, we, I asked the same question, and we responded, you know, building and driveways.
Okay, well, which-
We wanna leave it as is, there is no existing driveway, it's just lawn and, like-
Okay, but-
Okay, maybe just a note on the plan, then?
Well, again, I, I, I'm not, I'm not the police here, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, you know, an engineer, sees what happens, to think that someone's gonna go out there and spend north of a half a million dollars to rebuild a house, and you're not gonna put a walkway from your front step, and you're gonna park your car on your lawn, and you're gonna walk through the front door. You know, it's a little bit far-fetched to me, but it is what it is, so as long as you're-
You know that would be a violation.
Of course, and I've discussed it with the homeowner, and I asked specifically-
Again, I'm, I'm not, I'm just pointing things out.
Let's note it on the plan, okay?
Okay, the next thing is, is we, we just got, we just received two site plans, um, or yesterday, survey site plan from the architect, um-
No, that was from my survey, and I asked them to do two different-
Right.
There, there are two options.
Right.
I had to contact, because I had never heard of it before, I contacted Suffolk County Waste Water Management yesterday and asked them, I looked through every table on their website, and I said, where does it say that you have to be ten foot from waterline for, uh, stormwater? And he said, it's ten feet, and it's five feet for the laterals, I said, where does it say that? I said, I looked everywhere.
It's a ten-state standard.
It, yeah, but it's not, it, it was just kinda funny to me, and I'd never heard of it before.
You didn't see it in the residential standards?
It's not in there.
Usually you have a table.
I asked him, I said, where is it on the table? He said, it's not there, I said, okay, then we have to move the drywall. So we had two options, that's why I provided two, so whichever one that you felt was best, which John told me that you like it southerly.
Well, I, I like the one in the center of the lot, and the reason why I, I find the other one to be a little bit less desirable is that, uh, again, you're, you're basically two feet from the property line digging a hole about nine feet in the ground. So the reality of, of, of staying within your property limits, I think you're, you're better served by putting this thing in the middle of the lot.
That's why I didn't get anything stamped yet, I wanted, I wanted to hear your comment on that, so that's-
I, I think item three is, is, is probably the most, uh, comment of substance, is that, um, a sanitary inspection report was done or prepared by Tierra Tech Site Development, Inc.
Right.
And aren't out there, and they basically have-
Verified.
Verified what's in the ground, and have provided measurements of where this existing sanitary system is. Unfortunately, the dimensions that are in this report don't line up with where the system is shown on the survey.
That's, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, he took, first of all, he took the, um, he took the measurements from the shed and the pole. This is done with a transit, so accuracy, the property, if you will, I don't, um, I don't know if there's spot, I'm not really seeing spot elevations. Basically, when you pull down Wells Way, you go in like this, and then it drops down, and then it levels off into a hollow. So the shed is on the high point of the property, so if you were to, you know, he's gonna take a tape and put it there, and it's gonna lay on the ground, grade down, grade back up. His, I mean, this is done by a survey with a transit, so-
Ten feet?
Ten feet. I'm not-
I, I, my, my comments are more related to the logistics-
Right.
-of building this house.
Right.
And, and my point being, if this was a two-acre site, and you went out there, and you know that you're off by ten or fifteen feet with the sanitary system, you've got plenty of room to play with, if, if it, it's not, you know, you're only, the width of this lot here is forty-something feet, fifty feet. You don't have a lot of wiggle room, so all I'm saying to you is, this document that you submitted is inconsistent with what is being shown on the survey. So my, my point being is, is what's depicted on the survey site plan should be verified to be accurate. And I, I mean, I'll just give you-
What we could, I mean, what we can do is, there's, well, first of all, there's gonna be, correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't know if this is a building department or you, there's gonna have to be a, um, a final survey at the end, am I correct? Okay, so the distance from the property to the fa, I mean, from the sanitary foundation can be verified, it's not-
Again, I, I just, I, I think it's important because, um, you wanna make sure when you drop that drywall in there, even as, as far as the water service goes, is that existing?
Water service is existing.
Okay, so, so when you go out there and you put your drywall in, you wanna be ten feet, and, and even with that drywall, that drywall for drainage, there's a requirement that you be off the leaching pool for the sanitary structure as well.
Which it is at eleven.
You, you wanna make sure that you meet all those standards, and, 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 just to kinda show you what I'm talking about here, this, this was done by, he's saying from, from the telephone pole-
And the shed.
-to, to the outlet of the septic tank, eight is, is thirty feet. What I'm scaling here at forty scale is about twenty-two. So this septic tank would appear to be more where the X is, and this leaching blue would be more there. Again, it's more of just inconsistent information, just make sure that it's consistent, and we move on from there. The last thing was the deadman system for the retaining wall, and how a portion of that clay log on the back of that is underneath the porch, and it's inside the, um, supports for that deck.
Yeah, so we, we overlay the, the proposed deck pier with a deadman.
Right.
And the deadman's gonna be down six feet.
Okay.
And per the architectural drawings, the deck pier is only down four feet, and it's also one foot further inland from the face of the bluff, so they, they should not be in conflict.
Well, I, I don't believe they're in conflict, I think that one is landward than the other, and what I would, depending on how deep you are with that, you're gonna be putting those footings on, potentially on virgin soil then, so I'm just pointing it out, the logistics of building that, just make sure that, you know, one of the biggest concerns we had, or one of the things we've heard from the public on this comment, was the instability of what was being proposed, and the amount of excavation that was being incurred here, so, practically, you know, stuff like this, you need to set yourself up in the field, deal with the logistics of it all, so you don't run into a problem with that.
Practicality during the building process, obviously, that is gonna be disturbed soil.
Right.
It will be compacted, and it will be left, and the deck, I'm fast, but I'm not that, that fast, it's gonna take me about six months, so there'll be rainfall and everything else, and I'm more than confident that appears at that point, we'll be excavating.
You're gonna construct all this from the beach?
I'm-
You're gonna construct all this from the beach?
No, no.
It has to be landward.
No, everything is landward, everything is landward of the retaining wall.
How you gonna get your equipment down the side of the house, you got enough room?
The house is gonna be demolished.
Oh, okay.
Well, we're gonna, and, and this was something that I discussed with John earlier, uh, and I don't know if I discussed it here, if it was, I think it was with the zoning board of feels. We're gonna have to, we, it shows hay bales and silt barrier on the eastern, western, northern sides. Obviously, during the construction of the retaining wall, it's going to have to be attached to the others, so a certain tiebacks, you know, three, four feet, whatever they are on the returns, and the northern section of that will have to be removed during construction, it'll go up prior to demolition, portions of it will be taken down, obviously, construct the retaining wall, and then immediately put back up. And we're gonna have-
So it's just really, it's, it's construction sequencing-
Right.
-of the project, because it's such a tight area, and, you know, we've pointed this out, and you've said that you're aware of it, and you're gonna-
We're gonna address everything, and if it does, if there is any conflict, in a perfect world, those deadmen is gonna be exactly six feet down, and those piers are gonna be exactly four feet down, if there's any conflict any, in any way, I'll speak to the architect, and we, we might have to adjust a pier. If there's a tie rod coming in, and there's a pier right where the tie rod has to go, so we're gonna add a pier on either side of it, I mean, these are things-
Field change.
It's, it's a field change that will be addressed. Understand very much the environmental impacts here.
What's this little box over there?
Uh, where are you? That is-
I believe that's a planter.
Oh, yeah.
It's like a, it's a portion of the retaining wall that turns?
Now, I did add that condition and review regarding the private service into the resolution, that they would have to come back and forward a board if any, if any change on the site. Okay, that's it, Vinny?
Okay. So the last line of the situation, with the, with that, the proposed excavation of the foundation should be closely monitored, that's serious.
I'm outside every day.
Okay. That's the last line of this, of this document.
Every day.
Okay.
You have my word that-
You do the excavation?
I don't, but I watch it.
Okay. Sounds good.
The most, most important part is the beginning. Like it says, as far as the hay bales and silt barrier, you have my word, they'll go right back up. And we have to have an engineer on site during the construction of the wall, anyway. It's, it's not materials, not construction materials that are gonna go past it, and actually, the height of the existing retaining wall, plus or minus a foot over great azit is. There'll be no disturbance to the bluff whatsoever, there'll, no materials, the only disturbance is gonna be somebody down there with a nut and a bolt and a drill, and tying one end to the other.
Okay, you're on record. Okay, thank you, we have a resolution to, to bring up later on in the meeting.
Okay.
As amended. Right.
Okay, um, is, pardon my ignorance, is that, that it's, there's going to be a vote?
Yes, yes, it will be. After public comment, if there's any.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Tara Development, this is a continuation of a, a public hearing that was adjourned from November seventh of a two-lot minus subdivision.
Good afternoon, Charles Cuddy for the applicant. This is a two-lot subdivision on Ellen Street, uh, in the Tall Oaks subdivision. We went to the zoning board as this board requested, the zoning board, as your notes probably show, approved this application, both as to the size of the lots and as to the frontage of the lots. We have today received the approval from the Health Department for this preliminary map, and I'll hand that up, if I may.
What's the name on the map?
Name on the map is Denver.
Not Tara.
That's the building, but on the subdivision map, it was Tara.
The original subdivision was Tara, right?
Yeah. We also have prepared a deed for the small lot, which is across the street, it's been approved by Mr. Ellers, so we can send that to the town to be signed, and then we can record it, we're prepared to do that.
What's gonna happen with that sliver of land?
That piece of land is going to the town.
And it, yeah, it's because we, we contemplate it many different ways, and it continues with other town property, though. It's, it really doesn't add any liability or anything to the town.
And it's a, it's a seven thousand square foot piece, it's a very small piece. So what we're asking is that the hearing be closed, so that we can get approval. Once we get approval, we can sell the house that's there, and we can provide the town with seventy thousand dollars, which is the credit that was originally given for these lots. So again, I think we've complied, I think there are just two lots, um, in a ninety-nine lot subdivision. So at this point, I would ask that the hearing be closed.
Okay, we'll just see, before we do that, are there any other board questions or comments?
Do we have a copy, I just wanted, do we have a print here or no?
With the resolution?
No, so I just wanna see that, uh-
Well, the layout?
Layout of that sliver of land. Oh, he's got it.
So it was this piece right here, which it's all contiguous with the rest of the town land.
Oh, it is, town land, okay.
So it's really not-
Okay, that, that's interesting. Okay, that's fine.
So anyone from the public have any questions or comments on this public hearing, Tara Development? Anyone from the public? Okay.
I'm moving closer hearing. Tara Development.
Second motion?
Okay, motion made and seconded to close the public hearing for Tara Development, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Before we take up the resolutions, any public comment on the resolutions? Anyone want to address- Anyone want to address the board on any of the resolutions?
My name is Joe Hoffman and I'm speaking to the Donnelly Resolution.
Okay.
Where the homeowner's next door on, to the east. And I've been in contact with the zoning board of appeals and I also believe I sent something to the Town Planning Board about our concerns about the integrity of the bluff. We redid our house in nineteen eighty-five and the town had certain restrictions, one of which was we weren't allowed to demolish the house. We had to pull it back and so they made us move it back off the cliff thirteen feet to, again, ensure the integrity of the bluff. We were not allowed to put a full basement in for the same reason. And so we were asking that they, you know, first thing we're asking is if they consider the same type of thing. You can see how tight it is. Again, at the time, we weren't happy to pull it back thirteen feet, but we haven't lost an inch of bluff in the thirty years that we've been in the new structure. And again, I feel it was good engineering in the eighties, it's probably still good engineering today. And the only other piece was sort of a quality of life issue. We finally saw the plans, or at least a floor plan for the house, and we see that they have the side entrance on the east side of the house, which is the closest, is the shortest distance between the two houses. This is between our house and this new structure is probably going to be about fifteen feet, whereas the house to the west is probably closer to forty feet. So we wondered why they were putting the main entrance to the house on the east side, when they could easily have just flipped the house plan and put it on the west side. And we're also concerned about the mechanicals, if they're going to put air conditioning units and such on that same side. It, again, there's about fifteen feet between the two houses, once they move the house closer.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So you, can you respond to any of that, Greg? As far as the nineteen eighty-five regs to now, I mean, John? I mean, have they changed? I mean, I, I don't know what they were back then, but everything that's proposed is in compliance today. And I know all of the, all of the concerns that were raised, we probably reviewed this one more than any other two nineteen that's been in front of us for quite some time and everything seems to be adequately answered, correct?
They have, and they have a DZ permit.
Right, okay. And they received the variances from the zoning board, so... Okay, any other comments on the resolutions? Okay, first one.
I'll move resolution number seventeen, minor subdivision application of John Rado.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution seventeen for a minor two lot subdivision for John J. Rado. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution's approved.
I'll move resolution number eighteen for Central Square at Waiting River, final site plan. So moved?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution eighteen, I guess for the second time, for Central Square at Waiting River. Final site plan approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution's approved.
I'll move resolution nineteen of Donnelly Residence, Chapter two nineteen, as amended.
Second motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution nineteen for Donnelly Residence, Chapter two nineteen, as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution's approved.
Resolution number twenty, Tara Development Corp. Granting approval, two lot minus subdivision.
Second.
Second motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution twenty for Tara Development Corp., two lot minus subdivision. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution's approved.
We have discussion. On the Breezy Hill one, it is very controversial. Is there any way that we can pass this resolution but hold the scoping open for ten more days for written comments for community members?
Well, so, I think we're on the clock on this, right?
The draft scope was submitted on December twenty-sixth and secret does require a sixty day period. Anything beyond that, you may pull it to...
Okay, that's fine, just asking.
So what we planned on doing was approving this if the board desires to, as amended, to include any of the significant comments from today?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's fine. I'll move resolution number twenty-one, Breezy Hill Group, final scope, so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution twenty-one for Breezy Hill Group adopting the final scope as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution's approved.
I'm opposed.
You opposed to...
Scoping?
The scoping?
There's the scoping.
Or is this the scoping?
Yeah.
There's the scoping.
Aye.
Okay.
Identifying the issues.
Any public comment on any matter in front of the planning board? Anyone want to address the board?
Make a motion and remove the minutes of the February sixth, two thousand twenty, planning board minutes, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of February sixth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No executive session. Next meeting is March fifth at seven P.M. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
All in favor? Thank you.